Good morning, everyone. I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off of our very position and also please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. Call on the chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles.
Here.
I believe Councilwoman Williams will be here. I think it's running late. Councilwoman Worthy.
Here.
Back.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Cannon.
Here.
And Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Back to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Most gracious and heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and for all the blessings that you give us. Father, we'd like to offer our city to you and that we ask for protection for the current variant and pandemic that we're experiencing, God. Be with those families that have loved ones that are sick that are in hospitals. We ask you to be especially with those folks, God, that are suffering. We ask you to be with our first responders, the ones that are dealing with this on a frontline basis, our healthcare workers and our fire department, our police department, those that are having to engage with individuals that are sick, God. We ask for protection and safety. Father, we ask you to bless the deliberations of this council and of our administration, of our mayor, and just ask you that may the words of our mouth be pleasing unto your sight. Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for At this time, we'll have an update from our chief, Fire Chief Reed. We won't have one from EMA today, but we'll have one from our Fire Chief.
Good morning, all.
Good morning.
Ms. Geithner expresses her upsetness for not being here. I have her report. Starting tomorrow, every household can receive for free at-home COVID test by following the instructions on www.covidtest.gov. Our numbers for Edgewall County, cases total in the last 28 days, 3,398. Deaths in our county in the last 28 days would be seven. Total cases for Edgewall County is 23,628, and total deaths for the pandemic were 533. The COVID conference call for elected officials, first responders, and department heads will be done tomorrow and every Wednesday beginning at 11:00 a.m. to pass on and receive information from our local municipalities. Today, the EMA and Health Department is hosting a free COVID testing and vaccination site. This is from 9:00 a.m. till 3:00 p.m. at North Glencoe Baptist Church in East Gaston. And she said to remind everyone that our local ERs are not testing sites. Please visit your health department or your general practitioner if you need a COVID test. From the Fire Department, in the last two and a half weeks, we've had 25 personnel out with COVID. Only one had what we'd consider severe symptoms. Everyone else was mild and moderate. We currently only have three out. So while the numbers are continuing to climb, I'm hoping they're going to fall just as fast here in a few weeks, but only time will tell.
Any questions from council?
I have one.
Yes.
You know, how's our medic situation looking? Is that affecting the medic calls with so many of them being out in the units?
Oh, yeah. It's affected our medic situation as far as, you know, we're having to work extra overtime. We're already short medics anyway. So we've had several days where we've had to move people around and not close a fire truck, but not have paramedics on certain trucks, yes, we have. But we are working all the overtime that we are able to, every one we can, to get work over to try to cover those spots.
Okay. Do we have a plan if we go below where you couldn't fill the trucks at all? Do we have a plan? Do we have mutual aid from different cities?
Oh, yes. We have both verbal and written agreements with other municipalities to assist us, and we do have a plan internally. Should we start running out of medics for either, you know, resignations, retirements, or from the COVID itself, you know, we will shut down certain ALS trucks and run with a lower amount of ALS trucks. We'll have the same amount of fire trucks, we just won't have as many paramedics on the streets.
Let them know what that ALS means.
Oh, I'm sorry. I keep talking in Fire Department terms. ALS is advanced life support. BLS is basic life support. So all of our trucks, every truck in the city has EMTs on it, which is basic life support. We have five trucks that have advanced life support, and they cover our paramedics for the city. So what that means is we would not shut the fire truck down, but they'd have a lower level of EMS care on there.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Is there any other questions?
Thank you, Chief.
Hey, thank you.
We will continue with our agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Public Work Committee work session and the city council meeting that was held January the 11th.
Slow move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of January the 7th through the 13th.
Slow move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Any proclamations? Unfinished business, we have none today. We have our first item is this is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition. Two are in favor of a resolution on an abatement of nuisance on property located at 1006 Slusher Avenue in District 2, Kathy J. Papel and others being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition? Okay, if you'll come to the podium and give your name and address, please.
My name is Kathy Papel. My address is 1006 Slusher Avenue in East Gaston.
All right.
I'm here for a nuisance abatement. When my ex-husband and I split up, I left and left him the house. And he sabotaged.
Excuse me, please. Is there a mic?
Yeah, it's all just speaking.
Okay, speak in the mic for us, please.
Okay, is that better? Okay. Hey, sabotaged the house. A lot of the stuff that's in the backyard was under the house. I had to move it out to get a plumber in, and it's just been a mess. So I have got a lot of the stuff out of the backyard and out from under the house, but when they tore the house down next to us, we had rats bigger than my dog. And quite frankly, I was afraid to go down in there and poke around in that stuff. So I got rid of the rats, and now I'm working at going through it and seeing what needs to be kept. Some of the stuff in the backyard is like shingles for the roof, the gutters, and things that I need to fix the house.
So what are you, my question to you is what are you asking the council for today?
To give me a little more time to get it cleaned out, cleaned up.
Okay.
I've been to court in front of Ms. Granger, Judge Granger. I'm paying a fine now, but quite frankly, I'm doing the best I can with what I've got.
Okay.
Madam President, could I ask?
Go ahead.
Does anyone live in the house?
I live in it now.
Do you?
But before I could even move back in it, because when I left, I left him there. He flushed everything you can imagine in the septic, in the line. The plumber for that, I mean, it had to be cleaned from where it come down into the main line all the way to the street. There was baby wipes, there were socks, there was glass, there was plastic. That alone cost me over $5,000. You know, at that point in time, I was trying to get the house livable. I wasn't trying to pay too much attention about what was under the house, but then when the plumber had to come in, what was under the house had to come out. So that's why most of the stuff that's in the backyard is back there. A lot of it, I don't know what it is.
So how much time are you asking?
Ma'am?
So when you say you needed time, so how much time are you looking at?
Well, if the backyard will dry up, I'm thinking maybe a month or two. But it's a quagmire back there now, because when they tore that house down beside us, that, everything that comes down that hill comes into my backyard. They brought dirt in, after they tore the house down and cleaned it out, they brought dirt in to put like where the house was sitting. But then that left that big empty space between the house where, you know, where it's deep. And when it rains, and we've had a lot of rain the last couple of months, it comes down in the empty space down into my backyard.
Councilwoman Wilson, do you still have that picture?
I do.
Could you hold it up for me?
Yes, ma'am. There's a lot of stuff in here that's not gutters and shingles.
Right. Yeah. And a lot of it has been moved in the last two weeks, but.
Okay, would we want to?
I think Derrick wants to see it.
Oh, yeah. It's in District 2. Let me pass this down to Councilwoman Williams.
She's in District, ain't it?
We need to hear from our nuisance abatement director, our news department. So let us hear from them first, and then Councilwoman Williams is here, is in his district, and we'll let you know something. So if you'll just have a seat for a minute.
Okay.
And I'm asking if there's anyone who's speak in favor of this.
Thank you.
I think Mr. Greer, Mr. Brian Greer is here to speak in Mr. Harbison's.
Madam President, I'm Brian Greer with the Building Department. This case, as you see in the pictures, involves multiple nuisances of debris and trash, and there's also a vehicle back there. Started this case in July of 2020. Took the case to city courts and was unsuccessful in getting it cleaned up, and yes, we're asking you for a resolution to allow us to go clean the property up.
Question. David, second.
I was talking to Derrick. Oh, sorry. No, it's. Maybe see the pictures.
Oh, no, I just, I had a question for Brian. If that's, so what you're asking to do, make sure I understand, is just to clean up the outside of the house, of the property?
That's exactly correct.
And so structurally, is the house okay?
We haven't done any inspections of the house itself. Our case from the beginning to this point has strictly been the exterior and the stuff that's in the backyard primarily.
So what, once this is, this resolution passed, then this will put a lien on the property as far as the nuisance is concerned?
If the property is not cleaned up prior to us getting there.
Okay, all right.
Yes, ma'am. And then she will have an opportunity to pay us for that before the lien process ever begins.
Okay, all right.
And there is, just to be clear, one more question. There is a precedent for you guys working out a payment structure for that fee?
Sure, yes, sir.
Yeah.
At this point, the complaints that you've been getting are from the neighbors is mainly regarding the nuisance issues in the backyard.
Exactly right.
Yeah, okay. All right, and I apologize, I caught the tail end of her commentary, but what exactly, what exactly are you asking for? Are you asking for additional time or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the truck back there, that is my son's truck. It's got a legal tag on it, and the insurance has never been dropped. He just hasn't come out yet.
Okay.
Did you hear Mr. Harb, Mr. Greer said she's already been to court for this same thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, I have.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not, with the number of complaints and with where we have gotten to in terms of the maturity of this case, I'm not sure that there's anything that we'll be able to do in terms of stopping the nuisance, approving this resolution. But I think what, when you talk to Brian, what he will tell you is that it'll be a while before they get to it. It's in line with a number of others. So please take that time to secure any property that you need to and to try where you can to avoid the expense of having to repay the city for abating the nuisance for you. Okay? And honestly, I think if you'll work with them, you'll have adequate time. But we're going to go ahead and pass the resolution today. Okay?
So that is the pleasure of the council. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead, sir.
So if we go out and clean it up, she's going to be paying double, right? Because she's already paying a fine from the court system, right? And then she owe whatever it cost us to clean it up. So you really, boo hoo's you to go ahead on and clean it up yourself, because you're going to be, you're going to have a double whammy.
Yes.
Okay? All right.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 614 Tismor Ben Road in District 2, Stephen Ray Hui being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speak in favor?
Madam President, I'm Brian Greer with the Building Department. This case also involves the nuisance of trash and debris. We started this case May the 3rd, 2021. Again, we took the case to city court and was unsuccessful in getting it cleaned up, and we're asking you for a resolution to allow us to go clean this one up.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to a second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on an abatement of nuisance on property located at 2802 Water Avenue in District 6. The state of Alabama is subject to right of redemption of Martha Jacobs and her heir, if there's deceased being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Madam President, we started this case July the 2nd, 2020. Been no permits or improvements to the property been made, and we're asking for a resolution to remove the property.
Okay, what is the pleasure of the council?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 1505 Lookout Circle in District 7, Donald and Kay Walker being the last known owners. Is there anyone speak in opposition to this resolution?
Quick correction, Madam President, I think it's 1805 Lookout Circle. That's what it's.
Okay, I'm sorry, 1805 Lookout Circle.
This is, this is a vehicle, right? Because we're talking about.
It is.
Several vehicles, yes.
Is there one, anyone speak in favor?
Madam President, this case involves multiple vehicles on this property. We started this case August the 11th, 2020. Been no improvements made, and we were unsuccessful in getting it cleaned up in city court, so we're asking for a resolution to clean it up.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is a resolution on assessing a nuisance abatement lien on property at 211 Argyle Circle in District 5, and this is Sheila Freeman Somerville, subject to a market in favor of Champion Markets being the last known owners. And this is for the rehabilitation work that has already been performed, and the amount is $16,097. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speak in favor? What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to adopt, but I will just give one point of clarification for those who are wondering. I mean, this is obviously a big amount for a nuisance abatement. Something that we do in the city occasionally based on the Building Department's discretion is if there's a property that's potentially of high value that can be rehabilitated by the city, let's say, most of these properties that are abandoned properties have very little market value, it's actually cheaper to just tear them down than it is to try to fix them up as the city. This was not the case. This is actually a home that's in the historic district that is a large home, and it's my understanding that there was an instance of maybe a reverse mortgage or something, and the individual abandoned the property. So the home was actually in really good condition overall, but it had some wear and tear and disrepair. So the Building Department determined that this was eligible for the rehabilitation, and when they decide that, we go out, we hire contractors, the city, and we fix the house and make it, bring it back up to inhabitable, to code. And then we assign the cost of that to, as a lien on the property. So now this property will go through a sale, and once it sells, the new buyer will have to satisfy that lien to the city of $16,000 that we paid to fix it back up instead of tearing it all down. So that's, that's all, that's the reason the number for this particular abatement is pretty high. But I'm sorry, Madam President, move to the bait.
I have a question. To the Building Department, do we normally spend this much money on a house?
Isn't it a percentage?
It's a percentage of the tax value of the property, and like Councilman was saying, it kind of depends on the value of the property. But yes, we have spent this much before this, well, maybe not quite this much, this may be the largest one we've done, but we've spent a large volume before. But we have also in the past foreclosed on these properties and protected our investment that way also.
I mean, I think this is $3,000 or $4,000 square feet house over there in Argyle. I mean, it's a big old two-story.
There's no problem. I just, yeah, thank you.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
I did record a second.
A second.
Okay. Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next resolution is appointing members to the Gaston Commercial Development Board. Authority disappoints Ben Reed, Cynthia Toles, Derrick Williams, and Johnny Cannon for a term expiring November the 7th, 2020. At this time, I would like to substitute an amendment for this resolution. Do I have a second?
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to substitute the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries for the substitution.
The substitution for this motion is that Ben Reed, Councilman, will replace Harry McLendon for a term expiring November the 7th, 2022, and that Johnny Cannon, Councilman, will replace Eric Wright for a term expiring November the 7th, 2022. Do I have a motion to adopt this amended resolution?
Slow move.
Do I have a second?
I can, I'll second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, abstaining.
I'm abstaining also.
Okay, Worthy and Cannon abstained.
Wait a minute, I get something to change, man. Yeah.
Councilwoman Reeder's staying, sir.
Yeah.
Well, he was the second.
That was the second. Now leave it alone, it don't make any difference. I agreed to it anyway.
So your yes vote is going to stay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. I'll credit you with a yes. All righty, motion carries to adopt.
All right. New business. We have a citizen request, Joseph Cole. Give your name and address. His topic is employee issues and the East Gaston Community Center.
Good morning. My name is Joseph Cole. My residence is Atlanta, Georgia, to President Toles, President Pro Tem Cannon, to the other council members, to Mayor Williams, oh, I'm sorry, Mayor Geiton, and to all who are present. I'm here today to speak on two issues, and one of those issues dealing with employment issues. In September of last year, some employees of the City of Gaston contacted me and informed me they were not going to get the holiday pay for Juneteenth. So at that time, I sent a text to several of the council members questioning why this was not going to be done. President Toles promptly responded to me and informed me at that time, it was a little late to do anything about it, but they planned to make sure that they would vote to pass it in 2022. So I received a call this past week, and I was informed by employees, whether this is incorrect or not, but I want to bring before the council to get a clarification, that the holiday for Juneteenth would not be given to the employees of the City of Gaston. And this supposedly was taken out by the Christian lady who's over the finance department, Lisa Rossa. And at this point, I know the elected mayor of the city is Sherman Geiton, and you are the elected council. And I never known of a department head to usurp your authority to prevent employees from getting a holiday. And I don't know what the reason, I don't know if it's racial because this is Juneteenth. This was when the last slaves were recognized, to be informed that the war was over and they was free. Or whether it's a financial issue. But whatever it is, I would like to get a clarification from the council and the mayor this morning on if the employees are going to get this holiday, because Edgewall County and other municipalities in the area is getting it, so why are the employees of the City of Gaston, excuse me, is not getting this holiday, which is a national holiday that was voted on by Congress and passed by the president? Secondly, dealing with the East Gaston Community Center, we know the history, and I'm not going to elaborate on that. My question is if the engineer or if the council of that district can inform us on a tentative date on when this community center is going to open, or what month is it going to open? In 2020, I spoke before this council, and I was informed at that time that the center was going to open the latter part of 2020, early 2021. I know the pandemic and the COVID was very much involved in 2021, but the COVID did not shut down construction in a lot of areas. I just want to know if possible, if we can get a tentative date or month that the community center will open. Finally, President Toles, it's my understanding that some work is going to be done and Councilman word is discreet, and there is. Wordless District, and there is a master electrician in Councilor Wordless District, who said he's been on the bid list for the past 20 years, and have never been called or been given information on to bid on any projects for the City of Gaston. I will not call his name, but I will give his name to you and Councilor Wordless, because if I call his name, and if he hadn't gotten into work in the past 20 years, he definitely won't get in with me calling his name. So I will pass that information on to you all, so you can check into it. It's not that he hadn't gotten into work, which he hadn't, his concern, and he's never even been contacted to get an opportunity to bid on projects. So I wait for the response on the, and you can turn off your mic now, it stopped washing out, Ms. Nelson. So I want to know about the holiday and the East Gaston.
The first thing, I don't know what employee contacted you concerning Juneteenth. That has not been discussed with the council as far as giving it or not giving it, so that's, that's incorrect information.
Okay.
What was said.
Madam President, if we could, we could let Mr. Cole take his seat, I think he's done with his comments at this point.
Okay.
Yeah, we could just let Mr. Cole take his seat.
I prefer, my time is up, I have spoken, I prefer to just stand.
And then we'll talk as a body regarding these issues.
You know, this is a new year, and I didn't come here for any of this. I ask questions to the council. I think I can stand here, whether you discuss or not, and get the answer. I don't have to sit down, and I'm not going to speak back on it, but I do prefer to stand here and hear what it says, since I brought this before the council.
And we're not going to go back and forth, we're not going to go back and forth.
That's fine.
But what I was going to say is that as far as the Juneteenth holiday is, that has not been something of a discussion between the council, any of the council members. We understand that was something that declared that the state, the governor did at that particular time, and she did it quickly, and that was something that we could not, we could not do it on a dime. So that hasn't come up, that hasn't been discussed, so that, that's kind of, that information is not there. I believe Councilman Worthy asked the city engineer on last Tuesday, so I don't know who's funneling that information to you about the community center, but I think he asked the question, did you not ask the question?
Yes, I did, uh-huh.
So I don't know how it got all the way to Atlanta, Georgia.
You'd be surprised.
I, I know, I know.
I want to say something about the person that's in my district, I know exactly who you're talking about. Okay. So, okay, I just wanted to let you know.
Well, that's, that's, that's another thing as far as bid is concerned and all of that, so, you know, that's not our department, that's, that's not our, basically, our concern as far as bidding and everything, so we're not going to even discuss that now.
I just wanted to bring it to your concern, since it was an African-American man who had not been presented.
Yeah, but if you'll have a seat now, I'll have the city engineer.
When is it going to open? You didn't say anything about when the community center's going to open.
I said, when you have a seat, I'll have the city engineer to come forward, please.
Okay. Definitely want me to sit down.
The plan regarding the.
Hey Heath, are you, are you prepared to, okay.
This is Big Boy.
Yes, sir. All right, so actually, we are finally on the cusp of that center opening. There are quite a few reasons that got us from point A to B, from the start of the project, from the very initiation of the project to now, and as this council knows, we are now on our second contractor. That is, in my opinion, the primary reason why the first one was not finished as, as desired and contracted to do so. So now, through pandemic, through actually not giving excuses, we're seeing this on every construction project that has buildings involved. We do have supply issues, we do have labor issues, there are always weather issues, et cetera. All that combined, when we had to terminate or find in default the first contractor, that added a whole nother wrinkle of involvement, time assessments, legal issues, et cetera. So navigating that too, the, the question asked, the final inspections are occurring now, actually speaking with our personnel director. We look to have some of our staff start moving in within about a week while the contractor is finishing up some of his items. Right now, the schedule that I got for the full completion, we'll have the city training occurring with the contractors, the subcontractors, those equipment specialists, et cetera, happening from February 1st, that week on, for a couple of days. We want to make sure our folks are comfortable with everything, we need to get our maintenance guys involved, there's a lot of pieces to that. As far as when we want to open the facility, it'll be, in my opinion, not my place to say, but once our staff is comfortable running and operating that facility, this is really a smart facility, there is a lot of audio visual in this facility, not just cameras, but, but systems that will operate as far as HVAC systems, there are camera systems, television systems, et cetera. There's a lot there, and I don't want to leave something off and tell you incorrectly, but all of that requires a good bit of training. So I would think shortly thereafter, we'll have folks in that facility extremely excited about it. It, it has taken longer, even our contractor I'm staying close contact with, he'll be the first to tell you, it's time to get out of there. Every day that he's out there costs him more money, it goes from trying to make a profit for any contractor to actually just trying to break even, because he's got a lot of administrative costs to that, and so it's to all of our benefit for this one to be done. I do certainly apologize for any, any delays, we do our very best to the public to get things back in operation as quickly as we can.
Yeah, you don't have to apologize for that, and thank you very much, but I want to say to Mr. Cole, is that not offense to you, but I have, I have a problem with, we do, we've been doing updates about this community center for a while, there have been a lot of issues from the very beginning, and so what I'm saying to you is, those people that, that's in Councilman Williams' district, part of the people who participate at that community center and live in, in my district, and they have a right to come up here, to ask us anything that they desire to ask Councilman Worthy. You know, people are asking Councilman Worthy, and he's in District 3, but they should be asking Councilman Williams, but we've been keeping the public update, we've even toured it, so for anybody to call you, to get you to come all the way over here, 100, almost 200 miles, to find out when we're going to open up the center, I just think is real ludicrous on their part. But it's going to be open when it's right. We want it done right, it's a nice facility, and so when the date comes for it to be open, we're going to announce the date. Thank you.
Keith, can I ask you a quick question since you're up there?
Yes, sir.
When did we exactly start working on that building? Do you know that off the top of your?
The very first contract?
Yes.
I do. I pulled back in my records in case I was asked.
And if Councilman Worthy remembered, it was just a contractor with a hammer and a truck.
So the original notice, I'm sorry.
All right, okay, so, all right, go ahead.
So the original notice to proceed was issued on January 16th, 2018.
That's when he had the hammer and the truck.
Well, I've been arguing with people, and I don't like to, let me not say argue, but debate people, because they've been saying it's been over five years, a lot of people, and I've been trying to tell them it hadn't been that long, but I wasn't exactly sure how long, you know, exactly what the date was started.
Are they the people who use the, are they the ones who use the center?
Some of them, some of them do.
Okay.
Heath, while you're out there, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Just to wrap this little back and forth up, can you shed some light a little bit on how the bidding process actually works, as far as, it's a public notice, right?
Correct, be happy to.
Does that get run in the paper? Maybe Ms. Nelson can answer that, but.
It, well, it does, and, and it does come out of my department, so what we do is follow a strict competitive bid law process, and so depending on the cost of that, it's run off of an engineer's estimate, it's my estimate or another engineer that we're using for another discipline. Depending on the size of the job warrants, where and how you advertise it, it has to be followed per law, we do follow that on everything. We never want to exclude any contractor from being able to bid. In fact, we, we keep a rolling notice, per bid law, actually, it covers this also, and who you give notices to, and so if a contractor, any contractor, from anywhere, can be anywhere in the nation, now, we do require the proper licenses and all that, and it's covered on the advertisement, but if a contractor requests to be notified specifically, we are required to unless they don't answer three times after we've sent it. Now, we don't generally take a notice off, if we know you want to bid, we give it to you. So if somebody, I'm not aware of anybody that has not gotten notified, in fact, I ask everybody, if you want to bid, please send me your information, because we don't have enough contractors to bid as is, I want as many to bid as, as we can get. And so by all means, anybody can contact me, H Williamson at CityofGaston.com, submit me your information and your address, and I will give you any notice that, that applies to what you want to bid on, happy to do that, in fact, encourage it.
Thank you.
Yep.
You should take the opportunity to highlight is that, as it relates to minority and female contractors specifically, we utilize the state's bid list for contractors, we also utilize an agency in Birmingham, the South Region's Minority Development Council, and Minority Development Council, and that group has a membership, these are certified minority groups, they're not just some blackface with, with white money, or female face with male money. They're, they're certified minority businesses that we send our, we, we actually share information, whether it be job openings, whether it be contracts, we share information with that group, and that group disseminates it amongst, amongst its membership, so, so I think there's a lot of steps that get taken to ensure a high level of inclusion that sometimes get overlooked.
Yes, sir, we do send a notice, there's actually a gentleman that works for ADECA. Every notice we send out, whether we have contractors specifically to send those to or not, when we send them out to the papers, we include him, so that he does go through that, they've got their certified list, where you have to go through a certain, I don't even know the, the criteria they have to do to get on that list, but it certifies, as you said, that they are qualifying business to be on that list, and so we give it to him, then he can fan it out and, and spread it to his members, and so, yes, sir, we intend to get everybody involved that we can.
Thank, thank you.
I got one more question, and I have no problem, Mr. Cole, with you coming up and asking questions, so don't, don't get me wrong, I have no problem, that, that's your right. But what I want to know is, since they brought up somebody in my district, do you know of anybody minority from District 3 has bided on any projects? Can you?
I can't name any, I remember specifically, and I won't name the name, because I honestly don't remember, there was a, a contractor doing some civil type work, was not electrical, actually, we had to permit, this was paid for out of a commissioner's project, but in dealing with him, I asked him, I said, would you be willing to bid some of our concrete work, asphalt work, and he was not licensed, and I said, well, would you be willing to get your license? He said, not right now, but I'll consider it, because we have to have the licensed individuals once you hit that certain level, per law.
Right, and when the person called me and told me about this, that was my first question to him, has he bided? You know, you may get the bid if you're not the lowest bid, a responsible builder, or you may not get it.
Correct.
But you have to at least bid on it first before, you know, you throw your name in the pot.
So one of the ways that a lot of, of smaller contractors from any discipline and, and area that they want to work, the way that they get involved is they, they actually bid under the prime contractors that are eligible, qualified, and certified to submit our bids, and so they get a range of those bids, so there's actually a bid going on within a bid, and so we get the final number, but a lot of those guys will start out by getting a subcontractor's license, which allows them to work on those bigger projects under a prime contractor's name. So there is a method to it, and we work with a lot of folks, to my knowledge, I, I can't answer whether somebody's bid on, on one of those or not, just because I'm not aware. If anybody even has a question, if they can bid, send them to me, I'd be happy to sit down and talk with them in my office to see, hey, this is, this is your information, let's see your credentials, and what I can do to help you move along as much as I can, or at least give you the information on folks to talk to.
Yeah, and I understand what people are saying, that they don't see people like us, you know, working these jobs and stuff, but we have to bid on it, they ain't going to just give it to us, we got to bid on it. So that's what I'm encouraging, and I think, at one time, Councilman Williams, then you all come up with some, like, business names for people to go to, so, you know, we've tried to do all we could do, so now it's time for the business, black business community in, in our different districts, they're going to have to come to the table.
And Mr. Cole, I don't have a problem with you coming, I have a problem with the people, I have a problem with the people who, they don't have the nut, the nerve, or the guts to come themselves. Yes, I have, and the, and the other, the other thing about the, the other thing about the person that's bidding, they got my pre-council folder, but the very person that you're talking about, they're on one of our boards. They're on one of our boards, in fact, they're on the electrical board, so that means that they ought to have inside knowledge of bids. All right, so that's, that's my spiel.
We need to adjourn on that note.
So that they can put it on, so they can, they don't have the guts?
No.
Or the nerves? That they have to send you, that they have to send you up here, that they could ask us, ask them, and, and all we would do was say yes or no. That's the same thing about that person who's talking about, they've been, they, they've probably been on our, on that electrical board for 20 years, and that's the reason why, so they had, they should have inside information about bidding.
I don't mind taking the tone, man.
All right. This is a reminder that due to yesterday's holiday, Monday's garbage will be collected today, and Tuesday's ride will be collected on Wednesday, and there's no change to Thursday and Friday. Since I did all the talking, do I need to hit the gavel and say, we'll adjourn? I'll start with you, Councilman Wilson.
I just want to thank Mr. McLendon and Eric Wright for their service on the Commercial Development Authority Board, and just a point of clarification there, the bylaws of the Commercial Development Authority Board do allow for any number of council members or elected officials to serve, but it does clearly state that their term on that board would expire at the end of their election term, so that's what you see here. Couple of my colleagues here are replacing some expiring terms on the Commercial Development Authority, and those terms will expire, their term on the Development Authority will expire at the end of their term in office, that's all I have.
Councilman Bass.
Thank you, Madam President, just want to, I've had a lot of calls and contacts about leaf pickup, the trucks are in Clubview, and then they'll go to Country Club, so help is on the way, and I appreciate everybody's patience with that. Also, I don't know if we've mentioned it, but I want a, a big thank you and a big public nod to the Parks and Recreation Department for Smoke on the Falls, I believe it is, Jen, we're having national television going to come, the Food Network is going to come, and, and be a part of our Smoke on the Falls, so I'm assuming somebody at Parks and Recreation kind of maybe made a phone call, or made an application or something, or nothing, oh, you're supposed to take credit for that, you, I threw you a underhanded softball pitch there.
This competition that has been picked up nationally, and they actually protected us for that.
Okay.
It's just a great, great competition, they get time, and they want to put up our showcase, yes, now, on Smoke on the Falls.
Well, it sure is, and thank y'all for what y'all do to, to make that happen, I know that you just don't show up on Saturday morning and there's a cook-off thing, so right on the heels of a successful Christmas at the Falls, here you are, y'all are knocking it out of the park, thank you for what you do. Yeah, knocked it out of the park, yeah, that was good, I look forward to it, that's all I have, Madam President, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Reed.
Okay, just a point, the reason I hesitated a little while ago on that resolution was after I seconded it, and then I heard somebody, you know, passed on it, I thought, well, legal, I looked back at Lee, and he didn't say anything, so I figured, okay, I was about to change, but I'm glad I did. Oh, listen, I agreed to serve on that board for eight months, and that's it.
All right.
That's it.
Councilman Cannon?
Yes, I'm glad I'm on the board now, maybe something happened in Alabama City, you can sit there and think what's happened in Alabama City in the prior years from commercial development, we've got a, we've had the CVS there, and we've got a gun store that's opened up, we've had two grocery stores there that was in the. We've had two grocery stores there that was in the same location. You know, there's not really a lot happened in Alabama City. Alabama City folks are just as good as East Gaston folks or anybody in this town. And I would like to, hopefully, we can get something going over towards Alabama City. It seems like everybody always says, oh, people's afraid to come to Alabama City. They won't come over. They won't do this. They won't do that. Well, let's try and see if we can get something over there, commercial development stuff. You can't tell me that all the hamburger and hot dog places and the restaurants, everybody wants to be in East Gaston. I mean, I can't buy that. I think we need to take a closer look at Alabama City and see if we can't get it back moving, because it's been 16 years, and we hadn't, you know, community development. We hadn't really got a lot out of commercial development over there. And I just wish we could get something more out of it. That's why I went on the board for these eight months. And I'm going to be preaching and talking about that every meeting I'm going to be at on the board. Thank you.
Councilman Worthy.
While you're on that board, would you mention District 3 down on Tuscaloosa Avenue in front of the police? Because we need a little something down there too, Councilman. Thank you. I don't know. I don't even believe I have anything.
Remember, I'm not going to come back to you. I'm kidding.
No, but Mr. Cole, come anytime and talk. You know, some of these, some people in our different communities, you know, they are a little hesitant about coming up here, because they think they'll be blackballed and all that, you know. So I understand, and I have empathy. So I don't mind you coming and talking. And to the community in District 3, if you're on the state bid list, please put in. Bid on something. You may not get it, but keep bidding. Don't give up. We got to continue to fight the good fight. And that's all. And I thank Mr. Heath, you doing a wonderful job. And I'm looking forward to the resolution for the lights on Tuscaloosa to be fixed soon, okay? Thank you. Y'all have a good day.
Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I want to apologize to you and Mr. Cole. First, I want to apologize to you and Mr. Cole. My reaction had very little to do with any individual and more about process. He will tell you, maybe not publicly, but will tell you that, you know, what I've told him consistently about, what I've asked him consistently about the East Gaston Community Center is that he not provide updates until he's comfortable, that he can give good information. And so it's one of the reasons why I was pretty protective of him and him walking up, giving an impromptu update at this point. And I extend that to pretty much any department head. You know, no citizen gets to come up here and ask impromptu and force a department head's hand regarding an update if they're not prepared. Because ultimately, what you're going to get is a bunch of crap if they're not ready. And so honestly, I just, you know, and I'm more, and again, I appreciate what he shared, because I think one of the things that he said that was really important is that that is going to be a state-of-the-art facility. It's a one-of-a-kind. It's probably the first of many that we'll have here. And we want to make sure it's done right as opposed to done in a hurry. And I know people are anxious. They're excited, and I don't blame them. It's a $5 million facility, and I'm excited about it. But I prefer that it be done correctly as opposed to being done in a hurry. So if it takes a little extra time, you know, some of you may not, he didn't mention this, at least specifically, but some of you may not realize that with that state-of-the-art equipment, there are some electrical components that have been delayed getting to us because of some of the issues that we've been dealing with in our ports. And the training element is going to be critical. You know, so we really are going to have to take the time to make sure that our city employees are capable, because when people start booking events there, when they start coming there to utilize the facility, they don't want to hear, well, I don't know how that works, or, well, we're having technical difficulties and we can't help you. You know, people don't want to hear that. They want you to be ready. And so again, I think that's part of the delay. But having said that, y'all didn't deserve what I put out up there, so I apologize for that.
Well, I knew that Heath was ready. I knew the council were fact of last Tuesday. So I knew he was probably had stuff in his folder, because he had already been asked before.
And the other thing that is relates to the Juneteenth holiday is, you know, I stand firmly by that. When we haven't really talked about that as an elected body. And so, you know, and I think Dr. Toles made a pretty valid statement in that we'll discuss it for 2022 and make that an issue that we'll address at some point. But we really haven't talked about that as a body. And I just didn't want to jump out there now and start talking about it, because we hadn't talked about it as a body.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, again, that's, but again, none of that really warranted me being as aggressive as I was, so I apologize for that. The other thing I will say very clearly is I, as far as, and I think Councilman Wilson touched on it. You know, at the end of the day, I have served on the Gaston Commercial Development Authority for a number of years, actually prior to becoming an elected official. And you've often heard me talk about that authority as being one of our rainmaker authorities. It's one of our rainmaker, public-private partnerships. And all you have to do is look around the city at the activity that's happening, and you'll understand what I mean by that. It has generated a decent amount of activity. And so I think as a city, we have to be very careful not to minimize what that authority has done. Whether you're happy about whether it's come to your district or not, there's a, you know, you have to put a lot of that in the laps of private business owners, because they decide where they go. And all our IDA and our GDCCA can do is market those areas and hope that those private businesses will decide to locate there. And so if you've ever attended those meetings, which I have several, dozens of them, if you've ever attended those meetings, you do get a chance to hear some of the confidential information and the confidential exchanges between private businesses. And we all get a report on, and it's somewhat summarized, because everything can't be shared. But at the end of the day, a lot of work, both with all of those public-private partnerships, goes into selling this city to anybody that's interested in locating a business. So guys, our role and responsibility and all that is to make sure that we support them where we can. And anything short of that is unproductive. So let's just be clear about that. I would encourage each of us to make sure we're supporting those agencies so that they can do the best job that they possibly can do. That's all I have, Madam President.
Mayor, you have something?
Yes, ma'am. What Councilman Williams was saying is really true. A lot of times, there's so many things going on that the public don't ever really get all the information, and that makes it get really confusing. And, you know, there's been a lot of good things done in spite of all the negative in the last five or six years here, and there's more to come. But you have to find out the facts, and don't watch it on Facebook, because it's probably not true. But anyway, I appreciate Dr. Toles, Councilman Mr. Williams, and all the other people who have worked hard to do the good things here. We've had a lot of issues in the last few years. You know, the government was paying people not to come to work. We didn't have anybody to work. The public works and leads and all kinds of stuff. So there's a lot of things that's been against what we're doing, but it's going to be better. Just, you know, ask somebody who knows something, don't get it on Facebook, and find out the facts. Thank you.
I call for a motion to adjourn.